Okay, my clock turned four and I see that we do have a quorum of the city council present in the room, so I will call the meeting of the city council, city of Hillsborough, Kansas to order. First item on our agenda this afternoon is two items on our consent agenda. We have vouchers totaling eighty-three thousand nine hundred and forty dollars and sixty-one cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Any questions regarding the vouchers? Next, we have minutes from our May twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting and the May twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five special meeting. And did I understand we had a, there's a correction, no corrections?
Yeah.
Everyone received copies of the minutes? Any, any corrections or questions from the council? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now we come to our first public comment and we have a couple items under public comment. And we have Mr. Robert Rempel here and Robert, if you would be kind enough to come up here to the podium and address the council, please.
Answer to go to the podium?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Probably gavel?
Yeah. No gavel.
For score. Now, I, I just wanted to ask. Think I've come before you before asking about fireworks things, but just to see if we were interested in allowing one more day to shoot fireworks until I five. July fourth is currently the last day. It goes from on July four, you go from ten to twelve. Midnight, basically. And being that fourth falls on Friday, just requesting for one more day to the fifth to allow people in the city to shoot, in the county you can. County ordinance allows you to shoot from eight to ten. That's in Marion County outside of city limits on private property. That's basically what I'm asking for, that's simple.
Now, does, does it till eleven o'clock then midnight or what is it?
I don't have, I mean, I wrote down ten to ten, ten AM to ten PM. If.
I'm guessing ten PM is a little early.
I'll be pushing ten to eleven. I was looking at the county, the county says eight to ten PM. Ten PM does kind of get a little tight if people are planning to shoot a show or something like. So, I mean, ideally it's eight to eleven, I'm sorry, ten to eleven.
And when you say ten, you mean ten AM?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yep. Not a two-hour window.
But ten to twenty-three hundred, I guess.
Something tells me we've probably run into this before, we've had a request that goes the day after July fourth before. It's, is this our traditional practice during that or are we going outside of that?
I've done this for thirteen years now and I have not requested it even though I've wanted to. So usually on Fourth of July, when it falls on a Thursday, a lot of times Charlie, the guy who I bought the company from, would request. So if you look back prior to that, I think there were some requests. If I have requested for this before, I, I forgot.
You do get requests fairly regularly for, you know, different, different things. Typically, it's like a show or something else like that. So this is a little different in that regard. Uh, the state statute does allow until the fifth, which is what this, uh, what the county is following here, so. Yeah, I mean, I don't know if there's any, people are good, probably gonna do it anyway. To be really honest with you, uh, and there's always a, there's always an issue when municipality and the county aren't, don't match up. People can, you know, oh, I'm gonna go outside in the county and shoot and you know, it's probably not a huge deal to, to extend it one day, but yeah, it's kind of up to you guys.
I can make a suggestion, can we amend our ordinance to just follow the county or is there a reason why we have it strictly to before the fourth?
I cannot answer that question. I would suggest having a conversation with Ben, Chief Stackerty, I guess, uh, as to why, why it's set this way, there may be a reason.
Okay. Well, I suppose could we, has been already been informed about it or, okay, and?
Yeah, yeah, doesn't have any issues with.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So for clarity, July fourth is until midnight.
Mm-hmm.
Is that right?
Right.
Yep. And July fifth, we're just asking for eleven PM. Okay.
Is there, is this a city ordinance?
Yeah.
So just everyone knows we would have to amend the code. And so like, even if you give us direction to do that, we would, you would still have to vote.
It seems like it would make sense going forward that, that we look at it and maybe synchronize it with the state as opposed to, uh, any, any place else, it seems like a good place to, to land barring some issue that the chief might, might be, might bring up, but that would take a little bit of time.
Good.
Yeah, it would take some, something to do that.
I mean, we can do this one-off, you know, right now and not be an issue, but I think again, just in the interest of not having to do it every time something like this comes up.
Yeah.
Which is where I think you were going with it.
Yes.
I think there were some modifications this legislative session's regard to fireworks. I honestly have no idea what they are.
Right.
Those are you're allowed to sell your round. But there's a lot of stipulations in those lines about permanent structure. Um, your business, you can't, and then obviously it comes down to county and city ordinances. It says you can, but you would have to get through a lot of hoops.
Yeah.
And then when you can't shoot more than a week.
What's the point?
Having a fireworks building for sale for selling fireworks would be, uh, it'd be a long year. But yes, there's.
Any other questions for Robert or for Matt or for our attorney?
Probably a good idea, council had samples so we could file. We're doing.
Sure.
You know, I will, I will say this, Barney, in, in, in all fairness to, to Robert and also to the igloo. We do get a nice little sampler, you know, when we do our little big loop. At the igloo, it's a lot of loo, so it is a lot of fun and, and that gives Robert a chance to do a little promotion. There's still a cost involved. You know, for him, but it's, it's a fun, fun time for the community, so. Anything else? Hearing, hearing none, I would accept a motion to, uh, to, uh, uh, accept the request of Mr. Rempel and extend the days of fireworks can be discharged to include Saturday, July five, twenty twenty-five between the hours of ten AM and eleven PM. Okay, which one of you guys want to go for?
Okay.
Councilman Wilkins moves, Councilman Jorgensen seconds.
Oh, and then also it wouldn't be too much of an issue if we can get Ben involved and try to get our code and just match up with the state. So, right?
Okay, that's, that technically that's a separate, separate item, but.
Yeah, that's just a directive, we'll, we'll do that and.
You're not, you're not. Okay, so the motion, motion stands as, as I read it. And we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Your request is agreed, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too. We now also have a secondary fireworks request here.
Popular topic.
Um, from the Hillsborough United Methodist Church to hold their annual community fireworks display on Saturday, June twenty-ninth at dark.
Saturday or Sunday.
Sunday, excuse me, Sunday.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, they, they had called and requested this, I didn't know if anyone was. It's a pretty routine thing for us, they always go the last, the Sunday before the Fourth of July, in this case, it falls outside of the window. But when you normally can, um, shoot fireworks and so it would require an exemption due to our code um, or that if you're going to allow it. Uh, they've never had any issues over there, they usually have fire departments standing by, it's pretty, pretty minor. Wow, it's a cool show, I would say that, uh, but it's, it's always been well, well-maintained, I guess would be the way to say it. So, yeah, I just, I brought, I'm bringing that forward to you because they, they requested that. And this is kind of the place, I figured it would be pretty, pretty, uh, on the nose with Robert actually coming in before that, so. I wasn't sure if anyone would be here from, from the church, but apparently we, we didn't get anybody today, but that, that is the request and so that's what we would ask for tonight, today.
Questions?
When, when do they normally do it?
Do it the Sunday before.
Oh, so I was meaning.
Or the time was. Oh, uh, they usually go right at dark uh, until, yeah, it's, it's maybe an hour, maybe.
Okay.
Less than that, probably.
And we don't have to specifically do a motion for a timeframe, right? We just have to give them permission.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that, you know.
So the code says that you have to do it on, you have to give the date. I'm sure I got it right, date, place and time, um, you can give kind of general time, uh, with regard to that.
I, I would.
Time place to manor.
A window of, of nine to eleven.
Yeah, that would be more than sufficient, I would think.
Somebody like to make?
Okay, I'd like to make the motion to, um, allow the Hillsborough United Methodist Church to do their fireworks display, Sunday, June twenty-ninth, from nine to PM to eleven PM.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Wilkins and a second by Councilman By. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Now we've come to our business items section and we have three items there. First up is consideration of the final plat for the AMPI property, Mr. Styles.
Yeah, so we had this at the planning commission. Um, this is the second go-around, we did a preliminary, well, we actually did a sketch preliminary and a final plat for this, so. Uh, this will be the gonna pull it over on ice cream. Maybe, there we go. So this is, uh, the, the final plat proposed for the AMPI subdivision, so really what this is, is just taking and breaking up the AMPIs building into separate parcels. Um, and that's primarily for tax purposes, got some issues with the appraiser wanting to say that it's all taxable because we have some, uh, business activity that happens in this north piece of this plot. Um, right now, it's all one giant piece except, aside from this piece that we, uh, broke out for the EMS station, which they built back in twenty-two. Um, this lot right here is set up to be the fire station lot. And then we took and broke the building up into separate lots, so there's really four separate lots, they have common walls. Um, we've reviewed this through the planning commission, of course, we held all the required hearings and everything on that, so. Uh, they've made a recommendation to move forward with the final plat, uh, with no changes based on this. Um, so what you have here, just to kind of go further, lot, is that lot five? I.
Yes.
Can't see that real well. Uh, lot five, that's where we have the fire department station, um, well, the fire, fire apparatus, and then we use some of that for storage. A large section, all the section here in the center that has a basement is condemned, can't go in there. Uh, lot four here has the welding school and a little bit of the freezer space that's still usable. Lot three here is the police department, um, and it's the associate, and the associated storage space adjacent to. And lot six here is just, uh, mostly the condemned section in the north freezer. Uh, lot seven over here is where sanitation is, it's that separate building that sits on the east side. Sanitation and then we've got a, kind of a storage unit and then the spa company has the north part, so. I don't have the overlay that shows the buildings, but that's sort of how it's divided. Um, how we've set this up is a reserve, um, it's not a public right-of-way, so it's not like you can run through there. Uh, but it is a reserved section that has equal access for all the, the lots within, so that there's no orphan lots in there. Um, and then there's also this, this piece of property here, uh, there's a house right there and they would have access to this as well, so it's a common easement for adjacent property. Pretty straightforward, again, the reason why we're doing this is it's, it's held by the land bank, but they want to charge taxes on all of it, which is twenty-some thousand, twenty-two thousand-ish dollars a year. Um, so we probably won't save all of that, we're still probably have to pay taxes on that one building that's over here on lot seven. Uh, but we can at least make an argument that the rest of this needs to be exempted out, we shouldn't be paying taxes on it. Uh, and so that's, that's the recommendation, the planning commission voted unanimously to approve it and move forward with it. Again, we've had a sketch, sketch review, a preliminary review, and this is the final. So, uh, the action we're seeking here is for final approval of this plat. In case you want to know what a plat looks like, there's the second page, it's got all the signatures. Um, I would say that it has already been approved by the, um, county. Golly, not the county, I want to say appraiser, not the appraiser, the, the county.
Clerk?
No, not clerk either. Engineer, that's it. My brain can't process that and I can't read it from right here. Uh, so that's one, that's one that they, they have to send out because it's a, uh, contracted deal, the guy's in Emporia and he's kind of hard to get, but he's already approved it after reviewing it, so. Really, we, what we would do if you guys approve that is that we'd start the signature process on the MLR, which you signed last time, so. Um, it's actually owned by the land bank, but you guys are approving it as the city council in, in your authority of that. That perspective. Planning and zoning authority.
Questions?
What's your estimate of the savings you had mentioned, uh, twenty thousand, do you think? Get it down to half of that, ten thousand, we'd be paying?
I would hope, I would hope less than that, but.
Okay. Good.
To be determined. That'll be a whole other process.
Yeah.
Because really, we're only using half of that building for
Sanitation.
For a, a purpose that would be taxable, so we can make a pretty good argument.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to accept the final plat for the AMPI property, are we accepting or approving?
You are approving.
Approving.
I made that motion.
Councilman Jorgensen moves.
I'll say.
Councilman Wilkins seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Next item is consideration purchase and installation of rock for the H four C facility, Mr. Styles.
So this is a little bit of an interesting request, I'm bringing this forward as a member of, of the board, but also as a, as a concerned person with regard to this. So the H four C, uh, daycare center is getting closer to being open, we've got sixty-one kids out of the ninety-nine spots, uh, in the enrollment process, so. One thing that needs attention is the parking lot and the surrounding areas, it's, it's bad. Uh, there's of course been rock there for decades, but, uh, after the construction process, as you can see from the pictures, it's pretty rough. Um, so what I did is I asked Dale and the street crew, like, what, what do you think it would take to, to get this up to a, a nice parking area and some of the areas around the building that need some rock? Uh, so they estimated somewhere around two hundred tons, at twenty-nine dollars a ton, that's somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty-eight hundred dollars. Uh, that's the cost of material and then of course, we could, we could put that in, we've got the machinery and labor to do that, um, just to kind of smooth it out and make it nice. Um, of course, the intervention here is a little bit different. But we've got, we've got a vested interest in this, it's a stated objective of ours, um, to, to help with this, with this daycare facility, feel like it's a pretty major benefit and, um, they also gave us a free shade structure, uh, worth about thirty-one thousand bucks, which is, is nothing to bat an eye at, I mean, you don't want to say, it's not a quid pro quo necessarily, but um, you know, that's something to take into consideration here too, so. Uh, fifty-eight hundred bucks is a pretty low cost for a pretty high impact improvement on this, and I think we could go a long way to getting them further down the road with this. Um, so we did set aside twenty thousand for senior government projects and there weren't any senior government projects this year, so there's a little bit of funds there within the general fund to do that. Uh, so I'm just recommending that we maybe move forward with that, uh, for the minor investment here and go ahead and authorize the purchase and installation.
Question?
So, the area, the whole area in the pictures that's, looks like it's currently dirt, um, that'll all be rock, that's what they're estimating to be all rock, and the function of that is parking lot?
That's the parking lot.
Okay, and we've thought through to the point where we believe that'll be suitable enough with that rock to, to park on.
Yeah, like I said, there's a pretty solid base of rock there from when there was a church, um, so they felt like that would be a pretty, they're real familiar with this site because we've been there a lot, uh, and I think they're, they're pretty comfortable that that two hundred tons will get it.
How soon could they do it?
As soon as we could get it worked into the schedule, uh, they're doing some work actually just down the street, uh, so.
I would just ask, what type of rock are we talking about?
That's a good question, I think they were talking about, uh, some crushed limestone on the base and then some hard rock on the top.
I would really not like to see any dust-making rock in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
I think we will get a number of complaints, we've already had a number of complaints about dust and dirt in the area, so I think if we're gonna put rock in, let's make sure we put the right kind of rock in there that's not gonna leave dust or crush up and, and, you know, deteriorate, which limestone will.
Will eventually.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good, good thought.
I don't know if that impacts the cost or.
I don't think so, I think Dale specked it out as, as hard rock, so.
The hard rock at H four C?
Hard rock. You bet.
So that's the space that the, that the people who attended the church would always park in, right? That's why it's got some.
You can see some of the little small.
Yeah, it's got years.
Hard rock. Rock in there, you know, that have been there before.
It's just, uh, when, when they did the construction, you know, of course, they, they ended up dragging a lot of dirt out and they haven't really done a great job of resetting that, in my opinion. Um, but you can see from like the tire tracks, we actually, they had, uh, somebody get stuck over there who was interviewing. It's not a great first impression. Um, so, yeah, I mean, I think this would go a long way to help them out on this.
Yeah. That's good.
Any other comments or questions?
I, I have one just for some clarification, uh, mentioning the, which I know we've talked about it, but just so that it can be to the public's knowledge as well, that shade structure uh, that you mentioned was, you know, donated because they couldn't use it. That isn't something that I don't want to state this. I believe that was used with the grant money, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, so it's not like the H four C used some of the funds that were given.
Correct, yeah, no.
Purchased it to then just to give to us, you know, just to state it, it was bought with grant money.
Yeah.
They can't use it, so otherwise it would just be trash, yes.
Right, yeah, um, that's a good point, so it was bought with childcare accelerator funds, uh, from the state, so it does not, it's not local money that was raised or to be for that daycare facility. Uh, they, they chose not to use it on the, uh, older kids playground area because it would have destroyed the roots of the trees there. Um, and if they, they were really concerned about doing that, they didn't want to do that, and so they asked the state, well, can we put this and relocate this someplace else? And they said, yes, that's fine, you've already spent the money, it's, it's kind of part of that, and so we found a home for it out at the rec complex, it's actually gonna go kind of coming off of the concession stand and heading down toward, uh, down toward the fields there, so. They give you about a thirty by thirty cover on that area. So it's kind of a win-win for us, but, yeah, it is a hundred percent grant funded, it's not local money.
Just to get that out there.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good.
Local money was not used.
No, local money was used on that.
So. Is it out there yet?
Uh, no, they were supposed to start installing it today, but I don't think they did.
Not a good day.
Not a good day for that. Yeah.
And, and again, just as a matter of clarification, Ronald, you know you're gonna need to.
Yes.
Abstain, okay.
Yep, I know.
All right, is there, uh, a motion to, uh, to, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Approve the expenditure of approximately fifty-eight hundred dollars for rock. Councilman By moves, is there a second? Councilman McCarty, seconds? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those abstaining?
Abstain.
All those opposed? Motion carries?
I'm sorry, did you, who seconded that?
Barney.
Thank you.
And then finally, we have Hillsborough Ford invoices totaling one thousand sixty-two dollars and twelve cents, Mr. Styles?
Yeah, there's just a few, uh, pretty basic things, some older vehicles that are, uh, not on our fleet management system. Got one from the street department, one from the electric department, uh, basic maintenance kind of things, and it totals out to one thousand uh, sixty-two dollars and twelve cents.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to authorize payment of Hillsborough Ford invoices totaling one thousand sixty-two dollars, twelve cents. Councilman McCarty moves. Councilman Jorgensen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those abstaining?
Abstain.
All those opposed? Motion carries? We now have a couple discussion items. Uh, first up is, uh, a dog park proposal, Mr. Styles?
Yes, sir, so this is something we've been kind of working on for a while, uh, wanted to bring it to your attention. Uh, David Ettinger and I have been talking about it and for him, Jerry and I talked about it. Uh, it's been a, on the radar, it's been a senior class, uh, project for a couple of times, uh, I can't seem to get it to, let drag and share. Share the or maybe I won't. Just drag it up right here this way. So what it is, is, uh, we've talked about a dog park and we've, we've had a couple different ideas, one was to utilize the space within the fairgrounds area, the fair board didn't like that, and so they kind of vetoed that. Um, and so we've kind of went back to the drawing board, we've looked at a couple different areas. And we kind of came to the conclusion that this might be the best solution after David has had time to mow and think about it. Uh, you can think a lot on your own mower. And, uh, he's, he's got, I think, a pretty good solution here, actually, so. Uh, the proposed spot for this would be this, uh, orange area here, so what you end up doing is that entire east side is existing fence that's, uh, already in there. The blue dot represents an existing gate that could be accessed to the park. Uh, and then we would, what we would have to do is relocate one of the tee pads, that white block that you can kind of see in here is a tee pad for the disc golf course. Uh, we consulted with Bob Welk, who's our resident disc golf expert, um, on the, on the rec commission board and actually raised all the money to put this course in, and he felt like that would be an acceptable deal, there's a basket here too that would also have to get moved, but they, they kind of liked the new potential area there to put it somewhere in between these two trees. Disc golfers, in case you don't know, really enjoy throwing between trees and obstacles. Didn't know that, but that's something I've learned in this process. Um, and so they would have to do a little relocation, uh, but that's pretty minimal, truth be told. Uh, and then we would pick up on the, the existing gate or the existing fence line here, and then we'd come out here and bring it down and then over and back around. This is kind of a rough idea of what it would look like, but, uh, we actually have the fence, we, we were able to, when we moved the fence in from the softball field, we had a lot left over and so did Tabor, and they've given us that fence, so we have six-foot chain length already. Uh, we would just need some new poles and some new fixed, uh, fixtures and stuff to get that in. Uh, pretty low cost, truth be told, at the end of the day, there's, there's a little bit of work to be done with that, but um, not, not too bad, um, and it, you know, with the existing gate, that's the hardest thing to put in, uh, as a gate. Uh, you also have parking right here adjacent, which is always a big deal, um, with the, uh, with the pool there, and it, it is a little bit higher profile area than what we previously talked about, which would have been down further south where the, uh, uh, flag football fields are, so, a pretty low-cost option. Not, you know, not, not a real difficult deal, we can actually. Not, you know, not not a real difficult deal. We can actually do most of the work ourselves. We've got, now we've got quite a bit of experience with putting in fence. Since we moved that softball fence in, they don't like it, but they can do it. And they've they've kind of figured that process out. So uh, we just wanted to bring that forward to say, hey, this is, this is kind of what we came up with. We know it's been out there in the community. There's been some advocates for this for a while. Um, and this is just the, this is what we feel like is the best idea, uh, lowest cost point of entry, highest profile. Now, will people use it? I hope so. I mean, maybe it's kind of an if you build it, they will come type of thing, but. It would help with some of the issues that we have with people running their dogs around the entire area. Of course, they don't pick up their dog waste. They get out onto the uh, the actual fields of the sports complex, and then they don't pick up their waste. And that's just gross, frankly, with uh, you know, kids playing out on those things. And it becomes, it becomes an issue and it's a point of frustration, I know, for for David having to clean up after people's dogs. So we wanted to bring that forward to you guys to have a conversation about that. I'm gonna pull it over so I can actually read. You know, it's relatively low cost. I think we'd estimate it as little as five thousand dollars in additional costs. Due to the time of year, though, we won't be able to get to it till fall because we're knee deep of middle of rec season right now, so we don't really have a ton of. Uh, free time. But that's kind of, you know, the the, that's the basic pitch. That's the, you know, basic position of that. From a strategic posture, I think it fits into kind of what we're doing. Got the existing resources, pretty minimal cost, pretty minimal disruption. Pretty straightforward. Um, we got an opportunity to use some tree funds that have been hanging out for a while that make Danielle crazy. So, you know, we've got an opportunity there and uh, you know, that'll help kind of offset some of that cost too, so. Just wanted to put it out there for everybody.
You don't see any potential UCs with like high winds or anything else.
Sports complex is where wind is born and lives. Um, so it's probably gonna be an issue anywhere out there. Uh, there's just no windbreak, but.
You mean like to knocking down fencing and things like that, like damage?
We're just talking about tipping dogs.
Blowing into the pool.
That'd be the only thing that.
Yeah, I mean that.
But it's already an issue.
It's already an issue out there.
I I do have a question about, so the proximity to the pool, to the fairgrounds. Potentially tennis courts there. I mean, I like the accessibility and that it's around things down there instead of some other proposals we've had. But how do dog parks function in that if it gets heavy use and there's a lot of waste in there? And the the odor that may come from there blowing over to the pool potentially, um, is. Is there any pickup involved or do we have like a bag system there maybe where we ask them to pick up after them?
Yeah, that's the plan uh, would be to have, we have uh, dog waste stations that we have kind of strategically placed already. And so we would do something similar here. Of course, it's it's always incumbent on the pet owner to do that. It won't happen a hundred percent of the time. Um, and we have talked about that as as something that we would have to probably go in there and do on a regular basis. I would say that the the advocates for the dog park have volunteered. Volunteers are are as good as, you know, what you pay them. So who knows as far as what they would do. Now, they say they would do that and they, you know, they may make, they may make good on that. I don't know, but that would be kind of the promise. But yes, there would have to be some labor involved with that at some point, I'm sure.
I have a couple of questions. You mentioned that they could use the parking for the pool. Could that, could we run into an issue where there's so many people using the dog park that it cuts into the availability of pool parking? Or is the pool parking normally barely open?
I don't know that we've ever really had that parking lot full in a normal operating time. The times that it's full would be swim meets. Yeah, that would be the only time. Two Saturdays in the summer, there's for half a day, there's a problem. Uh, but otherwise, it's pretty open.
And then I was. Gonna get to the same point that Jeff was making. I think if we had little stations, you know, with trash cans, bags, that would help facilitate. Hey, we want you to clean up after your dog. Also, I'm sure we probably couldn't have it manned, of course, to look out for that, but I didn't know if with all the. Cameras that we were looking at installing, if this is a location that we could maybe point one to, and if there's a habitual person not picking up. Dog waste.
Writing a ticket or something?
I mean, or however, you know, I don't, I don't know if we have currently any code in regards of, which I'm sure we probably do for picking up after your dog and going.
Yeah, okay, yes, it will be.
We're working.
We're working on that, yeah. Uh, to answer your question about the camera, yeah, I think you could add something from the full, the pool and pick that up. Uh, you wouldn't probably get the whole thing.
I thought there were cameras at the fairgrounds, so.
Uh, we've actually taken and. Yeah, we took those out.
Afraid of afraid of what we might see going in the pits. Yeah, okay.
You could add some specific pickups in areas.
I would love to see something covering the dog park and and something in terms of signage that says. Something like, please pick up your waste or smile, you're on, you're on camera, pick up after your, after your pet. And just let people know, hey, we're watching. You know, so don't think you can get away with it. You know, at some point, you know, it's gonna catch up with you, that kind of thing.
And then my next question would be, I didn't. I don't know, I don't know a lot about dog parks. I don't know if it needs specific grass or anything like that, like uh. Golf golf courses do, you know, if we're gonna have to put anything special down that's better for dogs or. Easier or anything like that.
I don't think so. At least initially, there may be some, we probably want to evaluate that and see how it holds up. It's just.
Well, you know what happens to grass when Quinn gets teed on. That's a problem. It is a problem.
It is, for sure.
There's decent grass there now, so it wouldn't turn into a mud pit at this point.
No, it wouldn't. Yeah, we'd have to probably look at how our best to purchase that as we move forward. That's gonna be an issue, any any place you do a dog park, but uh, there there may be some things that we could put in there.
Have we had any feedback or should we solicit any feedback from these people that? I shouldn't say these people, from the people that have or folks that have requested a dog park. Has anybody specifically come to mind that we could solicit input on this? Before we make any decisions.
I have two neighbors I know specifically that are heavy users out there um, with their dogs. I can. I can show them this and get some feedback now if that's helpful.
I'd like to hear some feedback because what would, what would not be good in the end is put something in that. Everybody doesn't want to use or doesn't like. It doesn't work for the purpose that was intended for.
Yeah, we can, we can do that. I know Dave's had some conversations, but I don't know what to, what extent that has been, so. Yeah, we can put that out there.
And then, sorry, my last question is gonna be. I don't know how this would work either, um, but you know, for late take season, I didn't know if. If we would have to also treat the grass, if anything, you know, um. Trying to think about how I want to phrase it. Yeah, just pests in general, just with the high congregation of dogs and whatnot. I didn't know if that would have to be.
Wonder if David could almost talk to, I think they've got a dog park in Heston, outside of Heston, maybe he could. Place a call to them and see what kind of maintenance issues, things that we would not normally know about, not having one yet.
I think he has talked with a few folks, but I don't know who, I can't say for sure.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a comment in my travels this last weekend. Uh, I was thinking about this because we already got this agenda item. I happened to see when I was in Colorado, uh, a community that had a dog park and they called it Prairie Dog Park. And I thought, well, that ties into our prairie thing we normally did. And so if there was ever a naming, not a contest, but if we ever named it or anything. Prairie Dog Park, I thought was was kind of cute.
Like it.
I I also anticipate we probably also get comments for shade and benches as well.
For sure.
So.
Yeah, that's what we talked about, putting in more uh, trees and then then we did talk about a bench. Uh, one, we use those recycled tire benches, which are. Plenty heavy and plenty durable. They're not real cheap, but that'd be something we could put in here too. And that's actually one of the things we factored in with the cost, so.
It's like there could be some trees in there currently within.
There are, yeah, on that south side, there are, yeah. But you probably want to scatter some more. I mean, there's a couple of other considerations too for dogs and. What am I thinking? Like, some of, some of them are split for larger dogs and smaller dogs. I'm not sure that that would be a possibility with this, just. Based on how it kind of lays out, but um, we have seen that. Uh, we've seen like a holding entry gate. Where it's like a two gate system. Uh, that might be something we won't look at as well. Yeah, this is, this is kind of the initial push to to bring these things to the forefront so that we can, we're gonna get to a decision point. That's how we do it, so. Prairie Dog Park.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, you've got some some direction there and and we can uh, come back at a later time with with a few more additional feedback. Uh, next discussion item is golf course mower needs, Mr. Styles.
Yeah, we've got some issues with the golf course. I think the last meeting I mentioned that we had pretty much everything that could go wrong with our mowers did go wrong. And so I've put together a little something. I I went and talked with David and then Brian Young as your golf course superintendent to talk about what, what do we need? You know, what, how do we, how do we get ourselves out of this situation? Um, and so just put together a real quick deal with that. So current issues is that the greens mower and the fairway mower are. Effectively inoperable, um, real significant oil leak on the greens mower and that that has led to a failure on that. And so we've got some issues with that. Right now, we've got basically one functioning mower that we can swap reels out on. Um, I guess we should step back and talk about golf course. What would you have to have for a golf course mower? Uh, it's not like a rotary mower like you and I would have to mow our lawns that they use reels. Um, and so it's like old school reels. Um, and they, you know, they've got knives on them and they cut at different heights and you can adjust and set those however you need to based on what you're cutting. So um. A greens mower cuts really fine and can get really short. That's how you get an operable green. Uh, fairway mowers tend to be a little higher, uh, they're tend to be pretty wide. So if you guys ever see him out there mowing the greens, it it looks a little peculiar because it kind of goes back and forth and it's it's an odd looking kind of mower. Uh, but it uses reels to take that cut. Um, that's how you get it at golf course and of course, it's not, it's not cheap. None of it's cheap. Uh, but that's just the type of mower that you have to use. You can't use like a a grasshopper that we bought off the lot. So um, we've got that. We've got a fairway mower that's got a major hydraulic leak and so it's been out of commission. And we actually did use the rotary mower to mow the fairways. Um, and it's not great. Uh, but we had to do it because it was just getting to the point where they were, actually the grass was getting a little bit uh, starting to go to seed spots, yeah. So it was a problem. Um, so the Toro Green Master that we have is a three thousand, uh, thirty fifty model manufacturer twenty five years ago. It's got thirty three hundred hours on it and counting. It's pretty well at the end of its lifespan. Uh, the John Deere lightweight fairway motor that we have is twenty years old and it's got just about the same amount of hours on it. So that's kind of the two pieces that we're dealing with. Uh, we went out and looked for bids. We've we've talked with John Deere. Um, we only got a bid back from Toro. We have a Jacobson dealer that we've been working with, Kansas Golf and Turf. They're actually the closest and that would probably be my preferred just because of the proximity. Uh, they're in Park City, so it's a lot easier, whereas Toro is out of uh, Kansas City. And I think the John Deere dealer that he was talking about for the golf stuff is also in Kansas City here, so it's a little bit further to go. Yeah, so the board, the bid from Toro that we have right now, Greens Mower, Greens Master, a new one is about fifty thousand dollars and a Real Master is eighty one thousand dollars. So obviously, these are not your standard issue rotary motors where we could go buy one. They don't, they don't carry, Grasshopper doesn't make um, golf course equipment. What's the other one they have? Gravely, they don't do that. I mean, they're just hustler for that matter. So these are really the three top uh, people that John Deere, Toro and Jacobson are kind of the three. With that, so there's a fair market lease program that they pitched us to, which might not be a bad option. So what that is, is that you you basically pay the monthly. Uh, monthly fee for that. It stays under warranty for the thirty six months. You pay, you know, fourteen thousand annually for the greens and and twenty two for the. Fairway mower, they stay under that. The equipment's traded back in at the reduced value, the fair market value at the end of the term, and you get new equipment. So it's kind of, that's kind of that. That's how that is structured. It's sort of like our enterprise fleet management, only it's it's. More rudimentary than that, obviously, lower cost. But um, so tho- those are kind of the options that they gave us right now. Um, I, there's some other things that we need to, we've got a need for another utility vehicle and that could probably be be split between the two. Uh, the rec and the golf department. Uh, the bunker rake machine, which um, sets, resets the bunkers. It's got thirty six, thirty six hundred hours on it and manufactured ninety five, so that's thirty years old. Uh, vert cutting reels, and these are just reels that you would put on one of these mowers uh, for vert cutting. So that's for um, aerating and and seeding and being able to go over. Well, basically seeding kind of things uh, for that vert cutting. Uh, and then a walk behind greens mower, which is effectively just a hand power, well, it's often it's not. But it, it's just a mower, that's a greens mower that you can push. Kind of like what a regular push mower would be, but it's specifically designed for greens. Uh, and that's about fifteen thousandish dollars too for something like that. So none of this stuff is cheap. This is kind of the cost of running a golf course, unfortunately, so. Um, for me, kind of thinking about this, I wanted to bring it to your attention because this is something we gotta get solved. Uh, because we can't really run the golf course effectively without this equipment. Um, and it's only gonna get worse with more rain, unfortunately. Uh, I thi- I feel like we need at least one more bid because these are, these are big numbers we're dealing with. So we need at least one more bid. Comparing the options, look at the product payment structures. I know if we looked at a lease program, we're definitely gonna have to go and have uh, legal. Rework that whole thing because the way they've got the terms, it's like that doesn't work for us. Um, you could do it yourself and do kind of a lease purchase thing through a bank and probably make it worth just as easily. So that'd be an option too. Uh, and then I think we're gonna have to look at the fees or or something with the golf course itself to kind of help offset this cost and recover some of this cost because it's not. There's not enough there right now to to make those payments, so, or make that. Purchase.
So I have an idea. Don't know. How well it could work out, but what if we did? Did a type of um, like fundraiser through the golf course, know with all of our tournaments, you know, when they. I mean, I don't know how the fees for that work or anything like that. It was like, hey, do you want to donate a dollar for the golf course maintenance fund? You know, it all stays local. It's not going anywhere else. It's literally just to help. Recoup the losses of maintaining the golf course. And I didn't know if legally, can the city do that or city own golf course or?
I'm pretty sure you can be like.
Yeah, but I didn't know if we just make it fast and simple. I mean, I don't know how payments are done. Um, just because if it was like in the type of corridor that we have, it's like, hey, you know, just add an easy dollar. They don't have to do anything. You know, just add a dollar when they check out and that can go towards it or anything like that, or, I mean, you could also have a tip jar. I mean, that would help as well. But you know, just, just, I don't know, just different ways of, I guess, engaging the community that uses the golf course and say, hey. Can you give us a buck? You know?
Well, that that, yeah, I think that's a fair statement. Uh, as far as like revenue goes for tournaments. Don't make a ton. I don't know what, a couple thousand dollars maybe is a pretty good one.
Really depends on what.
A lot of the revenue from a tournament will get paid back out to the golfers.
Prize money, yeah. I mean, you could do a fundraiser tournament, but it would be. I mean, you, you're, you're getting in a couple thousand dollars at a time basically, so.
There's a reason that the city is running the golf course. And this is one, this is probably the biggest part, is the golf association basically ran out of funds. And they were not able to purchase the equipment that was needed to keep the golf course up. You know, and that's just where we are unfortunately. You know, it'd been nice to have dealt with this some time ago, but. That's the history channel and you have to deal with it today. I, my question is, how available and how quickly can you get this equipment if you decided, if the council agreed to? Some purchase or lease?
Uh, relatively quickly on the new stuff. It's not as far out as like when we purchased the sprayer and the other equipment that we purchased a couple of years ago. That was a few weeks, uh, a few weeks to see, I think it was six weeks on a couple of them. This is, this is a lot easier because these things are a little bit more available.
It doesn't seem like you, to be honest, it seems like we're in a situation where time is of the essence.
It is, uh, it is of the essence for sure.
And so, you know, especially with the rains we had just got today, you know, I don't think it's going to get any better. And I do know we invested a significant amount of money to put in those Zoisha, uh, fairways. And the Zoisha grass especially has to have a real mower. You can't cut it with a rotary mower. It's got to have a real mower. Period. So, you know, if we want to keep those. Fairways in place and not lose our greens either, that would be a catastrophe.
An expensive problem.
So. We're going to need to, to get moving, so.
Yeah.
My recommendation would be to get your third bid and then, or your second bid or whatever. And, uh, and let's, I think, my opinion is a lease is probably the way we're going to have to address this. I don't know that we've got, unless you've got cash sitting around that I'm not aware of.
Nope, not, not especially. I mean, no. Yeah, it would have to, I, I think a lease is probably the best option and just to keep it, you know, shorter term, keep it under. Uh, keep it under a, a warranty situation and then turn around and do it the correct way, in my opinion. And sell it at the end in three years and start over basically.
It's been my experience and then maybe your, your new bid vendors could tell you. But it isn't, I don't know if it's, if it's responsible to have only one piece of equipment that can do a job and then have it go down. And not have something else. So I don't know if there is, you know, some used. Some good used equipment that could be a backup piece of equipment that would not be used every day, you know?
Yeah, we actually did buy one from, uh.
Maxfield.
Maxfield, Jonathan Maxfield, who, he bought, it, it was a used piece that he bought to mow his large property. Uh, and decided that it wasn't going to work for him. And so we bought it and it was, it's a real mower and we were able to, to use it. It's a pretty decent mower for what we paid for it. Um, and that's kind of how we're getting by right now.
I would just suggest that we have some kind of back fallback position. And then, you know, maybe there, maybe there's something that they have that they could short-term lease. You, you know, rent, that you could rent as opposed to lease.
That too. Is there some rental units we can get in?
Are there neighboring communities that maybe have an agreement that like you're each other's backups?
That would be great. Yes, uh, we've talked about the Marion Country Club as being an option. Uh, but Heston's relatively close, but I'm not sure if they're, I'm not sure if they want to play ball with us, but.
Right.
Okay, uh, Marion probably would.
Let's just, let's just make sure that we're not, that, that we're got enough.
Yeah.
Yeah. That would be my comments. Council comments.
And would it just come out of the general fund?
Yeah, I mean, that's where golf lives, so it would come out of that. Um, in the past, we've used the, uh, local option, sales tax money. Which is designated for recre- well, recreation and capital stuff. Um. One of those two places probably, but I, I would suggest we're probably going to need to look at something on the fee structure or something like that. To, to help offset some of that.
Would, do you know off the top of your head when the last time we've adjusted the fees for?
Couple of years ago, I think, yeah, did a little bit, not much, but.
Slight increase.
It's not been, we, we've never done a huge increase, but.
Still pretty good fees compared to most courses around here. And for the shape that it's in, I mean, that'd be my comment is. So I'm fairly heavily involved with the, with the golf community and the reputation of a really good golf course is, has been growing. Ever since we did the Zoisha and it's been maintained very well. So I see a lot of golfers come in. From outside of Hillsborough to play just because it's a course that's affordable and it's in really good shape. So I would hope that we can find a, a solution to that. I'm also wondering if we can. I don't know whose time is being spent on trying to research and, and find. I, I talked to David a little bit and our superintendent. I don't, I don't know how adept he is at making the calls, trying to put together the, the business side of things. Maybe there's, um, maybe we could reach out to somebody within the, the golf association to see if there's a business person in there. That may be able to help us, that may know a little bit more, um, in that area.
Well, I actually have a nephew that, uh, runs, uh, the, uh, course that, uh, Pat Mahomes. Uh, is, is, lives on, so. And I've given his name before, but we can reach out to Grant.
Yep. I think we've worked with, uh, Mike Paget a little bit too. He's given some advice, um, but yeah, there's definitely some options to hell with that.
Right.
Also that guy in Hutch, you know, really well.
Yeah.
Guy.
That guy, our former superintendent.
Any other comments or direction from, from Matt? It just seems like we need to move forward.
Fast on it, yeah. So there may be, uh, we may have to have a special meeting depending on how that gets structured, but.
That's what we need to do.
That may be something we have to call, but.
But again, it's a major investment that, that we've got to protect. I mean, we've got to protect it. It's, uh. And I'm not a golfer, so you know, I'm not, I'm not, uh, I'm, you know, I don't have, uh, a dog in that fight. Other than, you know, it's the right thing to do.
Not a golfer either, but we need to do something. That's a lot of money that got vested in this.
Yeah, well, I didn't.
Okay, we'll move on. Uh, next up, we have a motion in front of us that the city council recess into executive session. For the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA seventy-five. Dash four, three, one, nine, B, one, for a period of ten minutes. The meeting will include the city administrator, city attorney. And the open meeting will resume at five, ten. Would somebody care to make that motion? Councilman By moves, Councilman McCarthy seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now in executive session.